... being recorded for broadcasts. Also, please silence your cell phones. If you are able, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Higgins, if you will call a roll, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Present.
Counsel DeMars.
Present.
Counsel Demambro.
Present.
Counsel Farulo.
Present.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Present.
Counsel Papalatto.
Present.
Counsel Toro.
Present.
Counsel Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present.
The first item is the Journal.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading in the previous meeting's Journal and approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is an order authorizing the man to enter into a utility easement agreement with the owners of Ten Russell Court.
Make a motion that the order be adopted?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is an order that the City Council authorize and approve the man to enter into an agreement for a payment in lieu of property taxes with Onyx Development Group at 120 Commerce Way.
Make a motion the matter be referred to the Committee on Finance?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is petition by People Fit for a cancer, breast cancer awareness walk at Han Pond on September 27, 2025 with a waiver, with the waiver of liability insurance.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and License?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is a petition for second-class motor vehicle sales license name change from Alex Auto Brokers to Alex Auto Brokers, Inc. at 505 Main Street. A communication dated July 28, 2025 was received from the property owner.
Make a motion the communication be received, made out of the permanent record?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion the matter be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and License?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the petition by Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts DBA Milton Rents for a special permit on Section 5.145 of the Woburn zoning ordinance at 210 New Boston Street.
Make a motion the matter be referred to a public hearing?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the petition by Adriana Rodriguez for a special permit under Section 5.1 subsection 57A for accessory storage or parking of two storage containers at 494 Main Street.
Make a motion the matter be referred to a public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the public hearings is petition by Anand Patel at 112 Commerce Way for a special permit for a supermarket. A committee report from the Committee on Special Permits would receive ought to pass with 13 conditions.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Attorney Ryan Douglas here on behalf of the petitioner, 500 Unicorn Park Drive, Woburn, Massachusetts with Ruben and Rodman. It's good to see you all and thank you, President Dillon, for having me here this evening.
Welcome.
So, the petitioner seeks to repurpose the space formerly occupied by the Bob's Discount Furniture. It's currently vacant for a new ethnic supermarket that will serve not just the Woburn community but the broader community as a whole. On July 22, the petition was reviewed by the Special Permit Committee who voted to recommend the petition with a set of 13 conditions. We had no issue with any of the 13 conditions. I believe you all have a copy before you, but it covers a range of items to ensure the site is responsibly operated. Health and safety concerns, there's rodent control measures that are implemented, grease trap compliance, parking maintenance, snow procedures, et cetera. And then in addition, there's also a relatively big traffic mitigation plan that would cover new signage, signaling, and other upgrades. This would also include police supervision as this, as this would be implemented. So unless there's any questions, we would just ask that is approved this evening.
Any questions for Attorney Douglas? Counsel Mercer Bruin.
I just wanted to thank the counsel and the petitioner. We all did a lot of work on this. Thank you very much. I'm happy to move it forward tonight if that's the will of the counsel. Looking forward to seeing it cleaned up down there and a new business move in.
Absolutely, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Make a motion open the public hearing?
Second.
A motion in second to open a public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion the special permit be granted, subject to the conditions as outlined in the committee report?
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Congratulations, good luck.
Congratulations, good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is a petition to determine whether the property located for Maywood Terrace is a nuisance as the term is used in Mass. General Law, Chapter 139, Section 1.
Counsel Bruin.
Thank you, President Dillon. So by way of an update, everyone on the council knows there was a court hearing earlier in July. The tenants are out, which was the main goal, given all the disruptions over the years and many of the issues that were taking place. I'm sure we'll hear from the neighbors this evening, perhaps, but before I finish up, I think we should open it up for the public hearing unless there's any other comments from the council president. I'll leave that to you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Make a motion open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion in a second to open the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? How are you tonight, sir?
Good, President Dillon, thank you.
Just your name and address, please, sir.
Ben Cordick, 36 Beach Street. Thank you. Where do we begin? So, I live right next to For Maywood. I directly abut it on Beach Street, so I'm basically back to their property so I can have a pretty good view of what's going on. We've been dealing with fallout at this property for over seven years, and it continues to be an issue, even with the tenants gone. And that was a huge win for us. We were thankful for what the city council has done to do that. I was thankful for Mark Salati, the city solicitor, to help us with that as well, and other folks within the community, and especially my neighbors, to help get them out of there. The issues are still continuing, and it continues to get back to what we've been talking about since day one, and it really truly is the management of this property. It's mismanaged day to day. We still have human extrament running down the side of the home. We have, I mean, I don't even know where to begin or how to repeat the story, but we have a, what was it, something along the lines of a 55-page document that we've compiled over a year of poor behavior from not only the tenants but the landlord, which dates back to, we had an illegal Airbnb, then we shifted over to what is now turning out to sound like unchecked Section 8 subsidy payments to the landlord for the tenants that were living there, as the property continued to deteriorate with no inspections being done, from what we understand, until maybe the very end? We don't quite understand exactly how we got to where we're at at this point. Now we're at the point where the house is being renovated with a dumpster in the driveway and no permits being pulled. So I alerted, and neighbors of mine have gone out and talked to the health, the commissioner, Quinn, other folks within the community to try to help with this. You know, there is just, we just continue to repeat this cycle of non-accountability, non-compliance. People are not abiding by the rest of the rules that we have to play by. If I want to renovate my kitchen, I have to pull a permit. There seems to be a kitchen renovation being done at For Maywood right now that's not being renovated. There's a dumpster full of construction debris, two-by-fours and plaster and black plastic bags. Word over the fences is, it's full of mold. Seems like a public health hazard to me. No one is inspecting the property. No one is going in to look at it. This property is a danger to our neighborhood, and it continues to be the landlord is not abiding by the rules and not adhering to the rest of the rules that we have to play with as a community. And we're just at the point now where this has been going on for, in the council, what, about a year now, Darlene, I think?
Yeah, just about.
We opened this up. We, as a community, as a neighborhood, have been dealing with this, mismanaged with this property, since Debbie and her family decided to move out and start to lease this property, and again, back to the illegal Airbnb, and then the nightmare of the tenants that we had to deal with and all of that. And we're super thankful that they're gone, and it's been a huge relief. But it's just like, where does this go from here? We are already seeing mismanagement beyond the tenants that were there, into the point now where it's just, it's just, it's just teed up to be more nonsense and back to where we are at stage one. I'll open it up to any questions, if anyone has, I'm happy to answer any, but, you know, I really have a few things that I think we need to address and really ask the council to do. So I wrote these down so I wouldn't forget about them, but I think at this point it makes sense to probably vote in favor as a council and as a community to designate this property as a nuisance. I can't imagine what the legal threshold is if Mark's here or if someone else is here that wants to speak upon that from a legal perspective. I would love to get an education on where we're missing the bar on that. So I would say we should designate this as a formal nuisance and whatever that means for the city to do, because whoever's running the property today is clearly not capable. And if we have to put someone in charge of it that's going to be able to manage this and do the right things like pull permits and get contractors in there to do work and figure out what's wrong with this house and get it back up so it can be rented or sold or whatever it may be, we need to address that. I don't think we should have anyone in this house at this point, and I don't know if there's an occupancy permit or how this works, because I'm not an expert on this, but I think we should at least look into how do we limit who goes in and where they're rented and how do we get the inspections that need to be done. So I think we need to not allow occupancy or rent collection at this point until all repairs have been made and it's been inspected. I'd also think that the Board of Health needs to go in and look at this. So if there is black mold in there or if there is other stuff, I heard the contractor screaming about how nasty the stove was when he was trying to load it into his truck and how disgusting it was, and that he's never seen a stove come out of a home that looked this bad. And normally you'd be like, oh, yeah, you know, but given the state of things and what we've heard, you know, the symptoms matched kind of the disease here, right? I also think we may need to look into, you know, was there Section 8 mismanagement here of funds? Was there some sort of nefariousness going on here? I don't know. I know that we took a while to figure out that these folks were indeed, you know, getting subsidy payments and that the interior of the property continued to diminish to the point where if you were receiving funds and the deck was indeed falling off the back, which we required them to do, or if an inspector from Section 8 or HUD or Metro Boston came by to look at this property would have realized that there's a half-filled pool of water in the backyard that was there for years, by the way. Not like a week, not like, you know, a month before we brought it up, but it was there for years, right? So I don't know, right? That's why I'm asking for help. Like, we need help from you, appreciative of everything that the council has done at this point, but like, this isn't, I wish this was over. I wish we could close the docket on this. I wish we could move forward, but it's clear that it's just not. And then we want some transparency, right? If there's no permits being pulled, I think we had a stop order taped to the door today of the front of the house, and then the owner of the home showed up and promptly removed it. And then I saw two contractors in there. So does a stop order mean stop? Toro, you're, you guys are notorious for building around here. You wouldn't know.
Yes.
Stop order means stop, right?
Stop.
So if a contractor goes in there and is doing work, you're putting that contractor's license at risk, right?
Yeah, but the commissioner would fine the contractor and or the...
So there's blatant disregard for anyone's livelihood? Anything else? It's just, it's nuts, right? And I don't know if this is just someone that's not in the rental business or the real estate business or understands what needs to be done, but clearly this isn't, this isn't working. And then we need to set a precedent. I really truly believe, and Darlene, we've spoken about this, from a precedent from a city perspective, we have no idea how many rental properties potentially are in the property, how many landlords are making money off the city of Woburn. Are we providing services, emergency services, all sorts of things to these folks? We don't know. We need to put a precedent in, some sort of landlord registration, landlord accountability act. I don't know. I'll leave that to you guys. That's what, that's what you guys are, you know, here to do, and I'm here to support that. But we need some sort of, you know, anytime someone's getting public funds or not meeting these criteria or how we can have something like this slip through the cracks and not get addressed, just leads to where we are today, which is just a really bad situation, not only for the city of Woburn, but the community on Maywood Terrace, the community on Beach Street, my neighbors, the people that have constantly been trying to deal with this. So, you know, I think those things are, you know, top of mind to me, and I'd like to see them addressed moving forward. And that's, that's, that's pretty much what I got to say tonight. So hopefully we can get some traction on this, and I, and I think at this point, a nuisance designation does make sense.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Good evening. Just your name and address, please.
I'm Capinder, 12 Maywood Terrace. I want to also thank the council for all their time and effort put into this for the neighborhood. We really appreciate it, especially Darlene you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
The whole effort. It's been great.
Thank you.
And a few of my points are just going to echo what Ben's already been up here saying, but it has been a long road for a lot of us, and your time and attention are greatly appreciated by the neighborhood. The symptoms of the problem have moved away, which is great, but we don't, we don't want to lose sight that the root of the problem is the landlord. During these hearings, we learned that the landlord is responsible for the property and the actions of the tenants. And we saw no help from the landlord in that respect over the past five-plus years. So the landlord remains, and as we look forward, it needs to be with the utmost caution. Having the issue open on the council's docket has kept her accountable to the members in getting the different issues addressed, like the swimming pool. You know, historically, she has ignored and took no action during the past five years when the neighbors contacted her. This lack of her responsibility is what brought us to this council a year ago. So I ask, will she be a responsible landlord going forward after being called to task in front of the council? It's not looking too good for her right now. She's begun major renovations, as Ben noted there. There's a large dumpster with construction material in it. No permits are posted. Today I did, I heard that the stop order was issued, and when I drove by around 2 o'clock, there was no longer any posting on the front door. And then there was a contractor, as Ben alluded to also, I saw a contractor parked. And, you know, we heard that that's, the contractor probably wouldn't have gone in if this post was still up there. So, again, that shows to me that the landlord has no intentions of complying with established rules and regulations. So I ask that you continue your support to protect our neighborhood and keep this nuisance hearing either open or some other way to continue some sort of surveillance over her and her actions. And, you know, keep it open until the home has got their inspection for occupancy, the permit, occupancy permit, I guess that's how you say it, right? So that's what I'm asking, because clearly she isn't going to do anything unless someone's got the, you know, got her under their thumb. That's what she's demonstrating to me. So, so that's what I ask you on the For Maywood Terrace situation. The other point I want to bring up, and again, I'm riding on the coattails of Ben, so excuse me for the repetition here, but is that the city will take a moment to think about establishing some sort of rental registry, something that can make landlords accountable. Currently there, you know, we probably don't even have any idea of what the number of rental units are, you know, multi, you know, the apartment complex, of course, they have rules, regulations and such, so they're, they're accounted for. It's the single and multifamily homes that are scooting underneath. So the owners, again, generating revenue, they're running a business in Woburn, they're using the services and resources in their operations. Any other business can have their licenses revoked if they fail to comply with city regulations, but landlords seem to have a free ride with their rental businesses in Woburn. I just did a quick search today that Boston does have a rental registry established now. I don't think it's even that old, a few years old, and Medfit is currently working on one. And one thing that has resonated with me is there was a comment early on when we started this process as to whether this, the rental situation could be considered a nuisance, whereas typically homes that are deemed a nuisance are, you know, abandoned or need to be torn down, and that wasn't the... to be torn down, and that wasn't the situation here. Boston, I printed out a copy of their ordinance, and they deem them to be problem properties. And then they have a list of criteria, and one of them, you know, which, this could have been checked off many times, if the police department has been called to the property not fewer than four times within the preceding 12-month period for any incident revolving arrestable offenses, which there were plenty of police calls. And then, you know, there's other stipulations, but deeming it a problem property versus a nuisance in what, you know, I think attorneys was mentioning about it not being a true nuisance. But that was the only way we could get it in here, was to put it under the heading of a nuisance, to bring the attention and draw to her. So I think that this four Maywood Terrace situation is the model to develop some sort of a apartment rental registry to get, you know, accountability and just some sort of oversight on it. It just seems crazy that these things can blow up to this point, so. So that's it for me.
Very good.
Thank you all again for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to have anything to say in this matter? Please step forward. How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Just your name and address, please.
Elica Elhaber, 6 Maywood Terrace.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you all for agreeing in opening this nuisance and working with us, you know, and I want to ask you to continue to keep it open because, you know, the tenants have moved out and that problem was fixed. The street is peaceful now. However, I want to ask you to keep this open, open at least till the fall because we haven't seen any improvement at the property, and we want the landlord to clean it up so it meets the standards of the street. Till now, there is still puke coming down the second floor on the siding of the house that hasn't been cleaned. The weeds are overgrown, and we don't know what's coming next. We just want to make sure that we don't end up back where we started with this property, and we want to ask you to continue supporting on us on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Elica.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to have anything to say in this? Good evening. Just your name and address, please.
Deborah McLaughlin, 23 Face Street, Wilmington. Hey, I was unaware I needed to pull permits to do the door and the cabinets.
Just do me a favor, pull up microphone a little closer to you, please. Thank you.
Okay. I spoke to commissioner today after I saw the notice on the door, so I was unaware I needed to do any of that. So now that I know, I'm going to go on and get the permits.
And you haven't continued any work since you've spoken to him?
The furnace got cleaned.
Pardon me?
The furnace got cleaned.
That's fine.
Through the, through the president, there's no permit required for that. I actually have a text message from the building commissioner about the boiler, and that was the work that was being done.
Yes.
Permit's not required.
Yes.
Very good. Anything else?
Do you guys have questions for me? I'm doing everything that I need to do right now. I'm trying to get it cleaned up. I'm trying to fix the issues in the house. You know, I had the dumpster, I had to take out all the insulation from the basement, all the appliances, I'm ripping out the cabinets, I had to tear up the floor upstairs in the two bedrooms. So everything in the dumpster is just stuff that I had to take out of the house.
Counselor Tor.
Thank you. What's the status of the exterior work in the house, just cleaning up the weeds, the puke that was referenced from the second floor?
Yeah, I need to get a power washer and...
Yeah, it would be great to, you know, the interior, I certainly appreciate your renovating the space and kind of bringing it up to one of the, one of the residents' say, kind of the, the street standards, but I think it goes a long way to show them how you guys are trying to do that by cleaning up the exterior. That's what they see every day, too.
Okay.
So getting that cleaned up, you know, being in the construction industry, I know how long it takes for interior renovations, it's not a fast process. The permitting is also online, too, so I don't know if your contractor's pulling it or you.
I am.
You should pull that tomorrow. It's a pretty quick process, so.
Yeah, I was Googling it. I looked at it this afternoon.
Yeah, I'd like to see that pulled and submitted to the commissioner tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, I'm sure because he's aware of the property and the desire for everyone to get this fixed and renovated and get work back going, I'm sure he'll review it and expedite it as long as you have the sufficient documentation.
Okay.
But also, just for your own sake, make sure you're hiring a contractor that's licensed and insured because, you know, certainly don't want to spend all the money to renovate the property and have someone do a subpar job, you know, so. But definitely get that exterior of that property cleaned up. Make sure when the renovation's happening, the debris is landing in the dumpster, not all over the space.
Everything is in the dumpster. There's nothing on the driveway. I made sure everything was cleaned up.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mercer-Bruin.
This has been a long haul, for sure.
Yes, it has.
And I know the neighbors are frustrated, and when we started this process, I explained what our nuisance law says. We need to make adjustments in our city, and as I, I'll put that aside. So Deborah, I also see that this was a tough haul for you, and I, just the last six months and how difficult it was as a homeowner to get people out of your own home.
Right.
Because of Section 8.
Right.
And the neighbors are absolutely right. Something needs to change with that.
Yeah.
And we've talked about that, but I want to make sure that this council addresses the things that we can address today.
Absolutely.
Changing Section 8 laws is not something we're going to be able to do overnight, but it is something that as city councilors and working with the neighborhood, we can, as a group, start writing letters to our state representatives and make a serious campaign to try to make that happen, just so everyone understands that's how that happens.
They hold no responsibility.
They hold no responsibility, so if we want to change those laws, we all have to collectively work towards doing that.
Yep.
But in terms of Woburn's actions, what we can do and what I can do as a city councillor moving forward, once we get past all of this, I mentioned to Ben and I think Elica in a recent email, that I'm bringing forward new legislation for consideration by this council about how we handle landlords and tenants and what our regulations will be here. And when I say proposed, they're proposed because every single person on this council is going to have to support them. It's going to be a process. So having said that, I was disappointed to hear you say, Deborah, that you didn't know you had to build or take building permits.
Yeah, sorry.
You own a property, you rent the property, you should be aware of what those rules are. I'm sorry, I just, I find that inexcusable. I really do. You have a responsibility as a landlord, and you saying you didn't know that is just one more reason, you just gave these neighbors another reason why you can't be a responsible landlord. Those are things you need to know. I don't disagree with them. I think we should hold this nuisance hearing over at least until the end of September, until we see the outside of the house cleaned up, the other things that need to be done, get those building permits in place, and then we go from there.
Okay.
That is my recommendation to the council tonight, and just keep things moving. That's, that's all I have.
Counselor Demas.
So Counselor Mercer-Bruin, I'd like to make a motion to send a communication from the council to city solicitor Salvati to indicate to the council what our next steps and the procedures would be if we were to finalize this hearing at the end of September and declare it a public nuisance.
I think it would be beneficial to all the members to have a brush-up in a, in a legal...
I'll second that motion.
I think, I think a legal, how can I put it, a legal summary as to what our next steps would be with a property like this. I think I'd, I'd want to know that well before we would be banking a vote to declare a property a public nuisance and what the city's responsibility would be at that time.
Very good. Counselor Demas.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Counselor Demas.
Deborah, I had stated this back six, eight months ago. You're going to need to be more vigilant on that property. You're going to need to make visits, and I'm not saying periodically every three or four months, I'm talking weekly.
Monthly, weekly, whatever.
Monthly, I mean, weekly, whatever it takes.
I know.
I would also strongly suggest you, you do a way better job vetting your next tenants.
Yes.
Because this isn't going to go away.
I know.
And now, there's a mark on that address. It's documented, it's filed.
Yep.
It's there, so.
I understand all that.
We, we, we don't want to take and add anymore to the file. So I would suggest more vigilance, and I will support Counselor Mercer-Bruin in any action that will deem these properties a nuisance, and anything that can be done to expedite that, I will support. Thank you.
Anyway, Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deborah, this has been a long, long haul. We said it's been almost a year. Now, I wish you would take care of this property like you do your house in Wilmington. You should be taking care of it the same way. I'm sure you maintain your grounds there, the grass is cut, weeds are cut, house looks presentable. This should be the same exact way, so you should be visiting it at least weekly so that we don't have an issue like this.
Yep.
And then, as Counselor Demas said, you need to vet the new people that you have moving in much better than what you did.
Yes.
So we don't run into this issue again.
Counselor Campbell.
I think the biggest concern I have right now is that the property is still not taken care of after all these months. There's still, whatever it is coming out of the window, throw up, whatever it happens to be, the weeds are still there. I guess I'm not understanding why.
The grass is cut. I don't know what the weeds are.
Okay, I'm hearing from the neighbors that the landscaping is not being taken care of, the grounds aren't being taken care of. Get whatever's on that wall of the house off. Clean it up. If you have to go out there yourself with a ladder, clean it with a hose. So I think that part, I just don't understand after all these months, why the whole place is not shining and beautiful.
I just got it back, and I wasn't allowed on the property.
How long have you been allowed on the property?
A couple weeks.
Okay, it should have been taken care of, all right? So tomorrow, I ask you to go there, if not tomorrow, the next day, get it cleaned. If you feel you can't clean it yourself, I am sure within the next few days you can get somebody to clean whatever is on the siding and to fix the grounds, whatever is the, is, you know, what needs to be done. There's no excuse for that after all this time, no excuse. So I guess I would ask, please, take care of that for the neighbors' sake, and then also what Counselor Viola said about whoever you end up putting in really needs to be vetted very, very well.
Yes.
And I think that's about it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Papalatto. Thank you. How long has the tenants been out of the house for now?
Like, two weeks.
What's that?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. And based on the rubble that you see that's there, that's been left behind, how long do you anticipate that it's going to take you to clean it up?
To clean it up, the inside?
To, to address all the concerns that the neighbors have?
I really have no idea.
Be a month away, or are we a year away?
Hopefully a month away. No, not a year. Hopefully a month away, I'm hoping.
Okay, so I think that in addition to the asking Salvati what steps we should take, which I think is a good idea, I think we should keep it on this agenda until, and you should come back on a monthly basis, hopefully it's one month.
Yep.
And we see progress, the neighbors see progress, and then we can just put this thing to bed. That's what I, I think we need to do for next steps.
Okay.
Because it doesn't feel like we're that far away. The neighbors might disagree, and I'd like to hear from them, but I feel like they've been out for two weeks, you're trying to do, you know, some upgrades here, and if a month from now this whole thing can be in the rearview mirror, that's the best-case scenario for everybody out there. So that's my two cents on this. Anyone else?
Just, I want to thank everyone for their support. This has been a long ordeal, and, you know, look, look for the, my proposed legislation over the next couple of weeks. That would not help us in this case because this one is already brought forward. So Deborah, I really hope you'll take everything to heart that you've heard here tonight. I don't know, do the neighbors know how to contact you if there's a problem?
Yeah.
They all do? Okay, have, has anyone reached out to you recently to say, hey, what's up?
No.
What's going on?
No.
Okay, because open lines of communication are, are a good thing. So if, if everyone has your number, I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
Maybe not a bad idea to reach out to them. They're your eyes and ears over there if you can't be there every day. You guys could be partners in this, and at the end of the day, it is your property, right? You, you own it.
Yes.
You have to take care of it. And I heard all the talk about, you know, keeping your lawn cut, just so everybody knows, there's, there's no law that says somebody has to keep their lawn mowed except to say if, or your bush is trimmed unless it's blocking the street view or there's, but, but it's the right thing to do.
Yes.
Right? It is the right thing to do.
Yes, I was trying to focus on inside and getting the bad stuff out.
There's a lot there. There's, there's a lot. So again, keep at it, and we'll see you next month.
Yeah, what date, so I know?
The clerk will, the...
I didn't realize that there was one tonight.
That's not up to me. It'll be up to September...
Get the due tonight.
September 16th?
September...
Okay, I didn't realize there was one tonight.
16th is...
Is our next, or second to next meeting.
Second is going to be canceled because of Labor Day and election.
So September...
September 16th.
September 16th.
Okay.
And, and the permits, I have a text here from Mr. Quinn who says that you have been in touch regarding those permits, so make sure you follow through on that, please.
Yep, I will.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little advice from the chair. Been in property management over 35 years, I'm a landlord, have had my real estate broker's license since 1986. There is great information out there for you to learn how to be responsible for your property and your tenants. It's a lot to maneuver, but the information's out there, it's in Book Farm, it's online, you can join organizations that landlords have. It's a great way to educate yourself so that you don't ever end up in this situation again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to September 16th?
Second. A motion and a second to continue the public hearing to September 16th, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming down.
Under unfinished business from the previous meeting is a petition for citizen participation by Tom Irwin from Dalton, Mass. regarding providing an update to the paint stewardship legislation.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, you have the floor, sir.
So this matter is going to be taken care of with the resolve later on on the meeting agenda, and this matter will be placed on file as well as the similar matter pending in committee, so I'll make a motion to place this particular request on file.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to suspend rules to take the following matter from the Committee on Liaison, which would be the second request to speak.
Original.
The original request to speak.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the matter is placed on file?
Second.
Motion and a second to place the matter on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Motion and a second to return to the regular order of business, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Under committee reports, on the committee on finance, on the order that $150,000 be transferred, excuse me, be appropriated from the traffic safety and infrastructure account to Fairfield New Boston Street mitigation.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the order that the city council take the necessary steps to fill a vacancy in the position of the deputy superintendent of public works, a committee report was received ought to pass, and ordinance charter and rules.
Make a motion that pursuant to Rule 4, a communication be sent to the human resources director, asking her to advertise the vacant position for the deputy superintendent of public works.